Good evening. Call to order, the town council meeting of November 17th, 2025, 7:30 p.m. in the town council chambers. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Counselor Berger.
Present.
Counselor Coughlin.
Present.
Counselor DeFazio.
Present.
Counselor Haple.
Present.
Counselor Heffernan.
Present.
Counselor Kiley.
Counselor McDougal.
Here.
Counselor Matthews.
Here.
Counselor Palazzo.
Present.
Counselor Shanahan.
Present.
Counselor Shinney.
Present.
Ten present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Kiley called, and she could not be here with us tonight. Before we go on to any announcements from the councilors, I would like to recognize our new town clerk and extend a warm welcome to our new town clerk, Lisa Van Winkle, as she joins us for her very first council meeting. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you.
Any other announcements from councilors?
Madam President.
Counselor Coughlin.
I've got just one right here. Our incredible high school chorus, the Waymouth High Harmonies, has received an invitation to perform at the legendary Carnegie Hall in New York, and not just as part of a larger group of singers, but with the opportunity for their own 30-minute solo set on that world-renowned stage. Additionally, the Waymouth High School Band has been invited to perform above the USS Intrepid Naval Memorial and Museum Ship in New York. The Intrepid is a World War II Essex-class aircraft carrier. Having served in the Pacific, she took part in the Battle of Leyte Gulf, the largest naval battle in history, and became a museum in 1982. These invitations are truly a once-in-a-lifetime honor and a reflection of our students, their hard work, and their talent. It's also a testimony to the direction of our music department and staff. As you can probably imagine, a trip like this is expensive. The music kids are raising funds to make sure that this happens, and we can all help. You can order an eight-inch, 28-ounce coffee cake in four different flavors for $20. You can contribute directly to the fundraiser, or you can offer to sponsor one of our musicians for the trip. For more information, check out Weypops Facebook page, or email Danielle Ames@Weypops, that's W-E-Y-P-O-P-S at gmail dot com. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Coughlin. Any other councils with announcements?
Madam President, just a reminder to the community that this weekend is Waymouth High Theater Company's production of Mean Girls. The show is going to be Friday, November 21st, Saturday, November 22nd, and Sunday, a 2:00 p.m. show on the 23rd. Tickets are available at ticketstage.com, and then you can search by school, by district, to find Mean Girls, which is ironically named because the group is lovely. However, I believe there are still tickets available and may be available for purchase the times of the show at Chapman Middle School.
Thank you, Counselor Palazzo. I am looking forward to that show myself. Any other councils with announcements? All right, moving on. We have four sets of minutes, and I refer over to Vice President Shanahan.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance committee meeting minutes of October 2nd, 2025.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion is approved.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Budget Management Committee meeting minutes of October 6th, 2025.
Second.
The motion has been first and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion is approved.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the town council meeting minutes of October 6th, 2025.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion is approved.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special town council meeting minutes of October 22nd, 2025.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion is approved. Thank you. Vice President Shanahan. We have nothing under resident and community comment, and we do have, under public hearings, we have one public hearing, 25099 fiscal year 2026 tax classification. I will refer over to Vice President Shanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing on Measure 25099 fiscal year 2026 tax classification. This hearing was published on 11/7/25.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I welcome up Trish Kane and Steve Whalen, Principal Assessor, and the Board of Assessors to present. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this year, the Board of Assessors is recommending a shift of 146%, which is a step down from 147 from last year. The commercial values continue to increase, but at a much lower rate than they had been all through COVID and the height of 2023. And our commercial properties are, you know, they're not really growing. We want to be kind to them. So the Board of Assessors is recommending a shift of 146%. I have included in the packet the breakout of our commercial properties and what their valuation looks like, and you'll see that the median commercial property is probably not as high as people think it is. The median commercial industrial value is only 562,900, whereas the median single-family is 570, or the average single-family home is 613,46, so we're used to seeing. You know, Waymouth still remains one of the property's lowest tax bills in the area, and we get a lot of services for that in our immediate area, and we still enjoy all those services and still have a lower single-family tax rate than anyone else around us.
Thank you. You were here earlier this evening before budget management, so Budget Management had an opportunity to ask questions. Any people from, anyone from the audience here have questions? This is a public hearing? Once again, public comment. Anyone have any? Councilors? Any questions? This is a public hearing? Anyone from the audience? All right, I'll take a motion.
Madam President, I'd like to move that we close the public hearing on Measure 25099 fiscal year 2026 tax classification.
Second.
That motion has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Communications and reports from the town mayor, town offices, and town boards. We have TJ Lacy, the Director of Administrative Services, here to present, and our CFO, Anthony Delmonico. If you'd like to come up, you have one to present as well. I understood? Are TJ going to take care of it?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. So our first item is 25105, Reserve Fund Transfer Unpaid Bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, councilors. The Malice Administration submits the measure for consideration by the town council. That the town of Waymouth transfer the sum of $250 from the reserve fund to the asset manager elevator maintenance line item for the purpose of paying the following unpaid bill, associated elevator invoice number 342306. Date of the invoice is 5/31/25 for $250. Furthermore, that the town accountant is hereby authorized to pay such bills at the time of the submission of the measure. The amount available in the reserve fund is $260,000, with two reserve fund measures pending, Measure 25101 for $250.81, and Measure 25102, which is $50,510.25.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to refer Measure 25105 Reserve Fund Transfer Unpaid Bill to Budget Management.
Second.
That motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion to refer? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion has passed.
Next, Measure 25106. The Malice Administration hereby submits the following measure to town council for its consideration and action, that the town of Waymouth appropriate the sum of $7,500,000 to pay costs associated with the Wolf Street Sewer Pump Station Improvement Project to add additional wet well and increase pumping capacity. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow $7,500,000 and issue bonds or notes therefore under Chapter 44 of the general laws or any other enabling authority, and that the mayor is authorized to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project. This measure requires a legal notice and public hearing.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to refer Measure 25106 Sewer Department, Wolf Street Sewer Pump Station Improvement Project borrowing request to Budget Management.
Second.
That motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion to refer? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that has been approved. Moving on.
Mayor Malice submits the following measure for consideration by town council, its measure number 25107, that the town of Waymouth through the town council, with the approval of the mayor, hereby amend Chapter 6, Preservation of Public Peace, in order by adding Section 6-1500 entitled Massage Establishment, inclusive of subsections 6-1501 through 6-1510, as follows in the document attached heretofore and marked Exhibit A. This measure also requires a legal notice and public hearing.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to refer Measure 25107, Proposed Ordinance, Chapter 6 of the town ordinances, adding Section 61500 concerning massage establishment requirements to the ordinance committee.
Second.
That motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion to refer? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion is approved. Moving on.
Next measure, number 25108. Mayor Malice submits the following measure for consideration by town council, that the town of Waymouth through the town council, with the approval of the mayor, hereby amends Chapter 6, Preservation of Public Peace, in order by adding Section 6-1600 entitled Mobility Studio Establishment, inclusive of the subsections 6-1601 through 6-1613, as follows in the document attached heretofore, also marked Exhibit A. This measure requires a legal notice and public hearing.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to refer Measure 25108, Proposed Ordinance, Chapter 6 of the town ordinances, adding Section 61600 concerning mobility studio establishment requirements to the ordinance committee.
Second.
That motion has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion is approved. And one more.
Next measure, number 25109. Mayor Malice submits the following measure for consideration by town council, that the town of Waymouth through town council, with the approval of the mayor, hereby amends Chapter 6, Preservation of Public Peace, in order by adding Section 6-1400 entitled Body Work Establishment, inclusive of the subsections 6-1401 through 6-1413, as follows in the document attached heretofore, in marked Exhibit A. This measure requires a legal notice and a public hearing.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to refer Measure 25109, Proposed Ordinance, Chapter 6 of the town ordinances, adding Section 6-1400 concerning body work establishment requirements to the ordinance committee.
Second.
That motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion to refer? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, under reports of committees, we have one item. It would be Budget Management Committee Chair Greg Shanahan. I'll refer over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Budget Management Committee met prior to the meeting this evening. There were six measures on the agenda. The first was Measure 25099, FY26 Tax Classification. This was referred to the Budget Management Committee on November 10th. We had our hearing this evening, which was advertised on November 7th, and the Budget Management Committee voted unanimous favorable action. On behalf of Mayor Michael Malice, I submit the following measure for consideration and action by the town council, that the town of Waymouth approve a classification tax rate shift of 1.46 for commercial, industrial, and personal property taxes with no residential exemption for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to refer?
Just a point of order, Madam President. Just a motion to approve, not a motion to refer. You just announced.
Thank you.
That would be a motion to approve.
Thank you for that correction. A motion to approve 25099 fiscal year 2026 tax classification. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion is approved.
Madam President, the next measure was Measure 25100, Donation to Elder Services. This measure was referred to the Budget Management Committee on November 10th, was heard this evening, and voted unanimous favorable action, and I know that Karen Johnson Johnson was here to speak to the measure.
Thank you, Madam President. Counsel, I am here to request your acceptance of a very generous donation from Mr. Nicholas O'Neil on behalf of his father, who had passed away 16 years ago. He stopped in to make a $5,500 donation to the senior center in memory of his father's passing. So this happens to us at the senior center. This one's rather large, so we are here to ask for your acceptance. There are no restrictions to this other than that it should remain for programs and services or how we feel it will deem best use for the seniors of this community. There was one restriction that he requested when we published our donors in our newsletter, that we just put it in there as anonymous, but understood that it was coming to full counsel for approval. So this donation is in memory of Nicholas O'Neil Jr. in the amount of $5,500.
Thank you. It's such a nice donation. It improves equality of life for us seniors here in Waymouth, and you do a great job there, so thank you for that. Any questions from the council?
Just a comment again, Madam President. And again, I'm thrilled to see people who have ties to the town of Waymouth giving back to the community in this way. We see a lot of people coming and volunteering for committees. We've seen it tonight, and we'll be continuing to see some more, but to see the monetary gifts come back too, I'm thrilled to see that. So very thankful for that.
Thank you. Does make a difference over there. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. On behalf of Mayor Michael Malice, I submit the following measure for consideration and action by the town council. Pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, 53 and 53A and 1/2, in the Code of Ordinances, Section 5308, the town of Waymouth through town council hereby accept the monetary gift of $5,500 from Nicholas O'Neil III in memory of his father, Nicholas O'Neil Jr., for the benefit of Waymouth Elder Services. In accepting this gift, the town agrees to fulfill the conditions and hereby authorize and appropriate the sum of money to the Department of Elder Services. This donation is only restricted by the terms and conditions, term and condition and department authorization with consent of the mayor should be granted to expend monies in accordance with said conditions.
Second.
That motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, the next measure, 25101 Reserve Fund Transfer Unpaid Bills. This was referred to Budget Management Committee on November 10th, and heard this evening and voted unanimous favorable action. You want to know that somebody didn't know it was coming up from the administration? Just state your name for the record.
Anthony Delmonico, CFO. I submit the following measure for consideration and action by town council, that the town of Waymouth transfer the sum of $250.81 from the reserve fund to asset management town hall telephone expense for the purpose of paying the following unpaid bill. Bill date was June 2nd, 2025, the company QTS Inc., invoice number 459206022025. The amount due, $250.81. Furthermore, that the town accountant is hereby authorized to pay such bills. At the time of the submittal of this measure, the amount available in the reserve fund is $260,000.
Thank you, Mr. Delmonico. Any questions from the council? All right, thank you.
So I'm going to read the measure again, as a report out from the Budget Management Committee. When we offer the Budget Management Committee, I submit the following measure for consideration and action by the town council, that the town of Waymouth transfer the sum of $250.81 from the reserve fund, 11325201573100, to asset management town hall telephone expense, 11904405534101212, for the purpose of paying the following unpaid bill. QTS Incorporated invoice number 459206022025, in the amount of $250.81. Furthermore, that the town accountant is hereby authorized to pay such bills. At the time of the submittal of this measure, the amount available in the reserve fund is $260,000.
Second.
That motion has been seconded. Any discussion?
Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. Just one quick thing, Anthony. I saw that there are two on the agenda this evening, the report out from Budget Management, another one that's being referred tonight to Budget Management. Do we have any more left in the pipeline here? Is this?
Besides the unpaid bill that the administration had just presented for, to go to the finance committee.
Okay. All right, that's all I have at this time, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes.
Madam President, the next measure is Measure 25102 Reserve Fund Transfer of Unpaid Bills. This was referred to the Budget Management Committee on November 10th, was deliberated upon this evening and voted a unanimous favorable action. I just have some questions.
Thank you. You read the measure. Any questions from the council?
Madam President, I just wanted to reiterate what I said during Budget Management, and I'm just appalled at how this could work. And when I first saw it come across with the $250 that was owed for a telephone answering service, okay, something slipped through the cracks. Okay. And it slipped through the cracks for about five months. Now we see $50,000 that slips through the cracks for over a year, and I'm appalled. And forgive me, during the Budget Management, I kind of raked the CFO over the coals a little bit about this, that if this was one of our own taxpayers, we would never be granting the sort of grace that's being granted to the town for this. We'd be charging interest. If it was a property tax that was being paid, there would be a tax title action being taken. There would be all kinds of actions being taken to make sure that the town was protected in this. For the town to turn around and to be, from the payee's perspective, has to be that you're dragging your feet. And to hear that, gee, there was snafus with emails, snafus with whatever, is unacceptable. And so Budget Management, we did want to know what was being done to correct this, and apparently there's been a new system coming where it's all going into the finance office directly as opposed to the various departments, and I'm thrilled to see that. And I'm expecting the CFO to come back and report to the council at some point in time as to exactly how that is working.
Thank you, Counselor Coughlin. Any other councils with questions?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to follow up with Counselor Coughlin, said I think that people should know, it isn't our new mayor, Mayor Malice, that he's just getting into this, a bill that's been going on five months. He was sitting in these chairs with us five months ago, so I think we should just let the public know that he's working to correct these unpaid bills and try to rectify the situation with Mr. Lacy. So that's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Matthews.
Madam President, if I could?
Yes.
Just to build out on a little, during the Budget Management Committee meeting tonight, there was a wide-ranging discussion on the issue and what caused it and things like that, and the administration did discuss the process improvements and the different kind of business practices we're going to be going into going forward, and I think one of the reasons I voted for it, to move forward outside of the need to simply pay bills, was that I liked to hear about the new process and how this is addressed, and I think we can effectively manage this in the future. So thank you for coming early tonight, and thank you for coming tonight.
Of course.
Thank you, Vice President Shanahan. All right, I'll take a motion.
Madam President, on Measure 25102 Reserve Fund Transfer Unpaid Bills, on behalf of Mayor Michael Malice, I submit the following measure for consideration and action by town council, that the town of Waymouth transfer the sum of $50,510.50 from the reserve fund, 11325201573100, to Medicaid reimbursement, 11336020530219, for the purpose of paying the following unpaid bills. New England Medical Billing Group Limited, 103024, in the amount of $7,692.99. 12825, again, New England Medical Group Limited, in the amount of $7,759.21. March 3rd, 2025, again, New England Medical Billing Group Limited, in the amount of $6,626.55. 62425, New England Medical Billing Group Limited, in the amount of $11,497,060. And June 24th, 2025, New England Medical Group Limited, in the amount of $16,934.15. Furthermore, that the town accountant is hereby authorized to pay said bills. At the time of the submittal of this measure, the amount available in the reserve fund is $260,000.
Second.
That motion has been seconded. Any additional discussion on the motion?
Question.
Thank you.
If I may, so did we ascertain why the unpaid bills exist? What was the reason?
It was the email that was attached. No one had access to anymore. It was the prior CFO's. We have since rectified that, and we now have the town accountant directly involved in all correspondence with New England Billing.
So it was the actions of the former CFO that caused this?
His departure. It can be alluded to. I don't want to directly call out an individual that's no longer here.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President, thank you. And I just wanted to make this point more clear, that our town CFO was not trained by his predecessor as well. There was a transition there that wasn't exactly ideal, and I will leave it there. And I think that this will be a one-time thing. Hopefully, we've had a very successful working relationship with you as a town council, and I expect that, I expect nothing more than that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Heffernan, for that additional information. Thank you, that's helpful. Any other councilors? Counselor McDougal.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I think what we talked about in budget was it was a procedural issue. The way of getting billing invoices into the town was through an email, and unfortunately, it was to a person's personal email, so the person had left the town, and that email was still going to that person, and I think that one of the procedural changes is going to be to make sure that departmentally, how they have emails, not personal emails to go to. So this is more or less a procedural issue that was going on here. It wasn't an individual kind of situation that was going on. I think there's other, probably other email addresses that were used for personally, email addresses, call them personal, but persons addressed to their email at waymouth.us.mass, and I think this has been corrected at this point.
Thank you, Counselor McDougal. Counselor Palazzo.
Thank you for the recognition. The question by Counselor McDougal cleared up my question.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great, moving on. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion is approved.
Next measure, Madam President, 25103 Appointment Commission on Disabilities, Margaret Scott. This was referred to the Budget Management Committee on November 10th, heard at the meeting prior to this meeting, where it was voted unanimous favorable action. Margaret was here earlier, and she knows the drill. Thanks very much.
Madam President. My name is Margaret Scott. It's a pleasure to be here. I have submitted my application to be a volunteer with Disabilities Commission of Waymouth. I'm the new kid on the block. I haven't lived here very long, so I feel like I have a lot to learn about Waymouth and about the benefits available to those with disabilities in Waymouth. I did serve for three years on the Commission of Disability I did serve for three years on the Commission of Disabilities in the town of Ludlow, when we were there, just for three years, and so I was on that. And I've served as a volunteer in several different places in the world, a Peace Corps volunteer in Brazil, and then as a missionary educator in several different countries. So I come to learn and share what I might have gathered from other places. I also served at Eastern Nazarene College for two years.
Any questions from the council? I'd just like to say thank you for stepping up to volunteer. You have a great resume. It's really impressive, a very exciting life you've lived. I do think you have a lot of valuable experience to add to the Commission on Disabilities, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you very much. I look forward to it.
Madam President, on behalf of the Budget Management Committee, I hereby submit the following measure for consideration by town council. In accordance with Section 210 of the Town Charter, I respectfully submit the name of Margaret Scott of 652 Commercial Street, Weymouth, Mass. 02189, for appointment to the Commission on Disabilities. This is a three-year term due to expire on June 30th, 2028, filling a vacancy created by the resignation of Mary Hagerty.
Second.
That motion has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That motion is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam President, the last measure is 25104 Appointment Commission on Disabilities, Joan Miller. This was referred to the Budget Management Committee on November 10th, heard this evening prior to this meeting, where it was voted unanimous favorable action, because Miller is here and also knows the drill.
Thank you very much for taking me. My name is Joan Miller, and I've lived in the town of Weymouth for 40 years, and I brought four kids up, and three of them had disabilities. I did serve with the Federation for Children as an advocate. I did serve also on the Townwide Parent Council in 766. I took my career into the court system and went into the juvenile court system. I've worked with people that needed restraining orders, mental health, substance abuse, worked with many families that the children had a lot of mental health, especially during the COVID. I've worked with the DCF and some of your attorneys here.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping up and volunteering, Joan. During the break between budget and the full town council tonight, you said that, you know, your resume wasn't quite the same, and it's quite valuable. You were a great addition to the Disabilities Commission, so thank you very much for stepping forward and volunteering and giving your expertise. Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Madam President, on Measure 25104 Appointment Commission on Disabilities, Joan Miller, on behalf of the Budget Management Committee, I hereby submit the following measure for consideration by the town council. In accordance with Section 210 of the Town Charter, I respectfully submit the name of Joan Miller of 47 Orchard Street, Weymouth, Mass. 02191, for appointment to the Commission on Disabilities, filling a three-year term due to expire on June 30th, 2026, which was a vacancy created by the resignation of Laurie Ann Yaisley-Drogen.
Second.
That motion has been seconded. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion is approved. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, and before we move to adjournment, I would like to recognize our secretary, Kim McCutcheon, on her last day, last day as a town council secretary, her contributions to the council, and her new position as the mayor's assistant to the mayor Malice. So congratulations, Kim, and thank you for all you've done for us here on the council.
You're welcome.
Will be adjourned, Madam President?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good evening.